Two, one.
Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to today's cabinet meeting. In advance of the meeting, everybody will have received, all the participants will have been sent electronic copies of both the agenda and the supplementary agenda together with reports. I can also confirm that you've all read the reports and all the proposed decisions and are familiar with the contents. Okay, so, as I said, everybody's been sent all those details, so at this stage I'm going to ask the committee secretary to bring in each cabinet members on screen individually to turn to check that they can be seen and they can also be heard.
Thank you, Joe. I'm just going to bring councillor Connor on firstly alongside yourself, just to double check. Morning, Sharon.
Morning.
We can see and hear you, thank you. I'll just move across now to councillor Brandt. Good morning, Paul. Say again, just do your microphone. You're on mute, Paul? All right, we'll move on from Paul and I'll come back to Paul, just to double check. Bring in the chief whip for Labour Group, councillor Bennett. Good morning, Ruth. Can you hear us okay? All right, we'll come off Ruth and we'll go on to councillor Miller. Councillor Miller, can you hear and see us okay?
Good morning, everyone, and I want to declare a declaration of interest when it comes to that point.
Okay, thank you, Gary, just make sure your camera feed is on when we get to the declaration test as well, thank you. Now we'll go to Lenny Hinnigan. Good morning, Lenny. That's all good. Now to Barry Kushner.
Oh, hello. Good morning.
Just get you on screen, Barry. Yeah, you're coming on now. Is your camera active, Barry?
Oh, it's on, should be on the ca- can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, it should, the camera should be on, I don't know why it's not.
It'll come through in a sec, just a delay. Thank you, Barry.
Okay.
Let's bring Wendy Simon in now. Wendy, can you see and hear us okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Wendy, thank you. Just trying to find councillor Thomas at the moment.
It's good.
He's not bigger on now, got you. Morning, Pam, can you see and hear us okay?
Yes, Pam, good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Cheers, thank you, Pam. Just go back and we'll try Sharon and then, Joe, we can go straight in. I've done Sharon, okay, we'll go straight in.
Right, what about Laura?
Laura has apologised, as has councillor Parsons. So, Joe, over to you.
Okay, thanks. Sharon, before we proceed, can I ask you to take your hand icon off, because it just looks as if you want to speak and anyone else. Okay, yeah, so if we go on to declarations of interest, and Gary, you've already indicated ahead of us getting to this item, that you wish to declare an interest.
Yes, an interest in item 4C, which is the endorsement of the fabric district development framework. The fact that I actually rent premises in that area, I don't think it will affect me or impact on me, but it is worth highlighting now.
Thank you, Gary, and just to confirm, obviously, you are a mayor lead, but you're not a voting cabinet member, but your interest is duly noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other declarations of interest? No. Okay, so if we move on.
It's Barbara. I would like to declare interest in item 4F as the director of SIL.
Okay, that will be noted, Barbara.
Thank you.
Barbara, when we come to the item of business concern, I'll just remind you, and if you could just mute your audio and your video feed for that item and come back at the end of it, if you could just continue to follow proceedings on screen.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, so if we then move on to item number two, which is the minutes of the last meeting, can we agree the minutes of that last meeting, please?
Agreed, agreed, agreed.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues, not doing an individual vote for those, so thank you.
Okay, so we now move on to item four, which are the main recommendations, and there are six public recommendations to be considered today. Item A, phase two, emergency Covid-19 responses for homeless and rough sleepers population. Again, you'll have read this in your report, pages six to fifteen, it's just seeking our approval to go to phase two of our emergency support and response to homeless and rough sleepers in the city in response to Covid-19, and it includes the provision, the ongoing provision that we have with regards to temporary accommodation. I don't know whether councillor Brandt, you want to make a few comments on this?
Please. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can, dear Paul.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a key priority for you as a mayor and us as a council, the safe accommodation of rough sleepers, and we know that the council was first in the country to have a 24/7 shelter for rough sleepers and Labbury House, but I'm also very keen as a priority to make sure that we don't return to the position that we were in pre-Covid, in the sense of having a real rough sleeper problem in the city, and this is one plank in that policy, to try and make sure that people who are currently accommodated in bed and breakfast accommodation have a more permanent solution to their housing needs found by us now, and to make sure that they are not at risk of being returned to the streets. This is a major plank of making sure that we try and end rough sleeping as a moral tragedy in the city, but also in the middle of a public health crisis, it would be crazy to, at any stage in the next months and years, to return any people to a position where they didn't have permanent accommodation and they were at risk of returning to the streets, so I'm really pleased to welcome this report. It performs a major part of our response to the current Covid position, and I'm looking forward to hopefully Liverpool being the first city in the country that can say it has effectively moved towards eradicating the problem of rough sleeping on our streets.
Okay, thank you for the comments, Paul. So are the recommendations then as set out in this report agreed, please? I'm going to ask the committee secretary to conduct the vote now.
Thank you, Joe, we'll take councillor Brandt first on this occasion. Paul, can you confirm your vote, please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Just unpin you and I will bring in, in sequence, councillor Connor first of all. Sharon, she'll be coming on screen now, we can see you now. Just lift your mic up, please, just so we can hear. Thank you, Sharon. Going to Lenny now. Lenny, you should be coming on screen shortly. Can you unmute your mic as well? Can you hear us okay? Is that agreed? Thanks, Lenny. Take councillor Kushner next, once the technology catches up with us. Barry, just bringing you on screen.
Agreed.
Just wait a sec, Barry, so we come on screen. I may need to come back to you, but your audio is quite clear, so we'll take that for now. Thank you. Wendy, coming to you now.
Big Barbara.
I'll come to you next, Barbara. Wendy, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Thank you. Barbara, you're coming on screen now.
Agreed.
Thank you, Barbara. Just going to come to Pam Thomas. Pam, you're coming on screen now. Just confirm your vote.
Yeah, agreed.
Thanks, Pam. Lastly, over to you, Mr Mayor, your vote, please.
Okay, agreed.
Thanks, Joe. Just to confirm that item is agreed unanimously by those cabinet members present, we can move on to the next item of business.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for that. We move on now to item 4B, which is grant funding from the Liverpool City Region Combined Authority, we're accepting £150,000 from the City Region Combined Authority, it will be used as a relief fund to support business in the music sector. Wendy, you want to make any comments on this item?
Just bear with us. Mayor, we just need to bring Wendy in, the technology's not keeping pace with us, so bear with us briefly. Wendy, you should be coming on screen now.
Yeah, this is part of an overall SIF bid that was put in for prior to Covid-19, obviously with the development of our music office in the city and the music board for the Liverpool City Region, and given the events, you know, post-March, it was decided that a pot of that money should be used for emergency funding for the music industry to support those businesses going forward, and so it will be open for applications in relation to that, so it really to respond as a part of that overall pot to the current situation that we're in.
Okay, so, good news story that can, thanks, Mike, as I said, just a good news story that we can relay out there to small businesses in that sector. Okay, so are the recommendations as set out in the report agreed, and, Mike, if I can ask you to now conduct the vote, please?
Thank you, Joe, just for attention of all cabinet members and officers present, there are some technical difficulties at the moment, meaning that we're not actually seeing you on screen at present, so we may need to pause proceedings, I'm going to attempt to do the votes and see if we can bring others on visually, but I would ask colleagues on cabinet, if you don't appear or can't hear, to leave the meeting and then rejoin, which should solve the connection issues. With that in mind, I'll go firstly over to councillor Brandt and see if we're able to bring you up on screen visually as well. Paul, do you want to mute your microphone?
Yeah.
I think there appears to be a time lag between your video appearing as well, so we'll accept that vote. Thank you, Paul.
In favour, agreed.
Move over to Sharon now. Sharon?
Agreed.
Thanks, Sharon. Come to Lenny now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Lenny. Next over to Barry.
Agreed.
Thanks, Barry. Come to Barbara now. Barbara, thank you. Wendy, we're coming to you now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Wendy. And lastly, Pam, before we return to the mayor. Pam?
Agreed.
Thanks, Pam. And Joe, just to confirm your vote?
Yeah, and agreed by me.
Thanks, Joe. That concludes the item of not agreed.
Okay, so we now move on then to item 4C, which is the endorsement of the fabric district development framework, that's on pages 21 to 74 of your agenda, and basically that recommendation seeks our endorsement of a new development framework for the fabric district. Do any cabinet members or officers wish to comment on this? I think it's a pretty straightforward report and recommendations, any comments from anybody? If you wish to do so, just raise your hand, I can see Claire Slinger, so can I bring you in, Claire?
Thank you, Chair, just bring Claire on now. Claire?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can do, thanks, Claire.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Yes, I'd just like to add to the report that following some comments and a very positive discussion with councillor Thomas yesterday, we'll actually also be bringing a further report back to cabinet to be very explicit about how we're going to make sure that inclusive design is used to ensure optimum accessibility in the fabric district area. Thank you.
Okay, so with those comments made and that assurance, can I ask you, Mike, to conduct the vote as to whether this recommendation is set out in the report is agreed?
Just briefly, Mr Mayor, councillor Thomas has asked to come on screen, so I'll put her on now for you as well.
Okay.
Pam, if you want to unmute your microphone as well, please?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Claire Slinger for the work that she put in and a very positive conversation yesterday.
Thanks, Pam.
Okay, so as I said, can I ask you, Mike, to conduct the vote on this recommendation, please?
Thanks, Chair, I will do now, I'll just take Pam off screen. Thanks. We will go first of all to councillor Brandt, Paul, I'm going to bring him on screen now. Right, Paul, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine, yes, I'm in favour.
Thanks, Paul. Sharon next, just going to put you on screen.
Agreed.
Thanks, Sharon. Just going to come to Lenny now.
Agreed.
Thank you. Over to Barry Kushner.
Agreed.
Thank you, Barry. Just going to come across to Barbara Murray. Barbara?
Agreed.
Thank you. Over to Wendy now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Wendy. And we come now to Pam Thomas.
Agreed.
Thank you, Pam, and over to you, Joe.
Agreed.
Thanks, Joe, and just to confirm the item's approved on that basis, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike, let's move on then to item 4D, which is the Sefton Park and Power Palm House interpretation plan. This is for us to agree a recommendation to accept funding from National Lottery Heritage Fund, and in turn complete legal agreement with Sefton Park Palm House Preservation Trust for them to use these funds. The funding with match funding from ourselves will continue to support this famous iconic building in the south of Liverpool within Sefton Park. So I don't know whether, Sharon, you wish to make a comment on this or not?
Yeah, Joe, only to add really that it's, you know, such welcome news as we celebrate 148th birthday this week for Sefton Park, so it's really welcome that we've received this funding, and I'm looking forward to the improvements being made in that three-year plan.
Okay, well, if we can just note those comments, but also then ask for you to conduct the vote about accepting the recommendations as set out in this report, Mike, please?
Thanks, Joe, over to Paul Brandt first, Paul, just bring you on screen. Are you happy to agree that?
Agreed, yes.
Thanks, Paul. Back to Sharon again now.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just going to go to Lenny and bring you on screen now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Lenny. Comes to councillor Kushner now. Barry?
Agreed.
Thanks, Barry. Just going over to Barbara now. Barbara?
Agreed.
Thanks, Barbara. Wendy, you should be coming on screen now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Wendy. Pam now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Pam, and over to you, Joe.
Agreed.
Just to confirm, the outcome of the vote is to approve the recommendation?
Okay, so if we then move on to a couple of urgency notices, at this stage I want to move that we consider a late item for business relating to the acceptance of grant funding. I propose to deal with this with less than the usual five days' notice, and the reason for the urgency is in order that we can accept the funding by the required deadline. In view of this and following consultation with the chair of the Culture and Tourism Select Committee, it's been agreed that the call-in doesn't apply to this particular item, so it is item A, the acceptance of a football foundation grant offer for the Liverpool Soccer Centre, and it's a recommendation that seeks to approve and accept a joint grant from the Football Foundation of £150,000 to support the refurbishment of the Liverpool Soccer Centre in partnership with Everton Ladies Football Club and the Liverpool County FA. Again, I'll add a comment, it's a great news story because it helps with the refurbishment of a long overdue refurbishment of that particular scheme, so Wendy, I don't know whether you want to add anything to that or make any comments?
Yeah, just briefly, Chair, I mean, as you say, it's a great news story, it's part of a long-term partnership with the County FA and Everton Ladies, the upgrade to those facilities, not just for Everton Ladies to be there, but also for the community and also for all schools, so I think it's a fantastic partnership, and, you know, that partnership will last for many years to come, so it is a great news story at the moment.
Okay, well, if we then finish with any comments on that, and nobody's indicated who is to speak, can I ask you, Mike, to conduct the vote on this recommendation, please, as set out within the report?
Thanks, Joe, going straight over to councillor Brandt. Paul, are you happy to agree it?
Yes, agreed.
Thanks, Paul. Next to Sharon, just put you on screen now, Sharon?
Agreed.
Thank you. Lenny, just putting you on screen now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Lenny. Barry, just putting you on screen.
Agreed.
Thanks, Barry. Coming to Barbara now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Barbara. Wendy?
Agreed.
Pam Thomas?
Agreed.
Thanks, Pam.
Agreed.
And Joe, just to confirm your vote?
Agreed.
Thanks, Joe, and just to confirm the outcome of the vote, so the recommendation's approved and we can go on to our next item.
Okay, so this is another urgent notice, it's, at this stage I want us to consider another late item of business, and it is that we deal with this in less than the usual five days' notice, and the reason for this urgent item is to ensure that we, that the proposed changes can be put in place to actually complement the strategic leadership across our education sector. So, in short, it seeks our approval to rationalise and strengthen the strategic leadership across education in the city by assigning leadership functions currently undertaken by our chief education officer. We want to, if you like, transfer and assign those to School Improvement Liverpool by means of a variation to the existing contract, so I don't know, Barbara, do you want to make any comments on this item?
Thanks, Joe, I can't bring Barbara in for this item, as you recall, she hasn't declared an interest. Not yet, you may want to make a few comments.
Okay, Steve, do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, thanks, Joe, appreciate you taking this as a late item. People may be aware that Heather Duggan was our chief education officer, has been appointed to be the head of Fazakley High School, and we thank Heather for the work she did, and obviously wish her well, but we're at a critical time in education in the city, so we've been supported massively by Jonathan Jones, the director of SIL, so him and his team are going to provide some capacity to cover the chief education officer role to help us over the next few months, so that's what this is, this report is doing, thanks.
Okay, I mean, that just gives you an explanation, it's basically to actually help the strategic leadership team function and get on with the important job that it needs to do, given the loss of Heather, so if we can take a vote, Mike, on agreeing that recommendation, please?
Thanks, Joe, just go straight away to Paul Brandt.
Agreed.
Thank you. Next to Sharon Connor.
Agreed.
Thanks, Sharon. Lenny now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Lenny. Barry now.
Agreed.
Thanks, Barry. Coming now to Wendy Simon.
Agreed.
Thanks, Wendy. And we'll come to Pam Thomas now. Thanks, Pam.
Agreed.
Thank you, and over to you, Joe, your vote, please?
Agreed.
Thanks, just to confirm that that is agreed, councillor Murray, having declared an interest and not voting and not being present for this item. Back to you, Joe.
Okay, thanks. We have no other reports to be considered under number five, six, seven and eight, so I'll now turn to my announcements before we exclude any of the press or public, just to make some... some announcements from me. I think today is the last day in terms of which starts of the school term, which starts half-term. As we know, schools have been in lockdown because of the coronavirus, except for the hubs working around the city. So during the half-term break and as we've been doing consistently over the last couple of weeks, we've been working with schools, head teachers, trade unions, to look at how we can make our schools safe for a partial return, especially in the primary sector. We'll continue to do that. But we just need to make it absolutely clear that our schools will return when it's safe to do so. And we will work with our schools to make sure that they are risk assessed, to make sure that they cover all eventualities in order to maintain a safe environment for our children if they return to school. So we'll update you as things progress. But it is our intention to try to get all of our schools that are being required to by government in terms of that particular cohort of students in school as soon as we possibly can. And as I said, that will be done in conjunction with everybody concerned, our partners. This week, both myself and Sharon Connor had conversations with our officers from highways, looking at the work that we intend to be doing to improve cycling within the city through installed pop-up cycle lanes. So we are in the process of doing that. We intend to make it work. We intend to be bold and seize the moment and seize the opportunity to do things differently. These pop-up bike lanes will not just become a requirement for us for now, but we hope in the long term as well, as we look also to make changes within the city centre where we can close off some roads as well to make it easier for restaurants and cafes to expand and have social distancing with their businesses. We'll also be making some announcements. Now, we're going to be supporting that particular sector early next week. So I think that's been a really productive last couple of days, certainly the last 10 days have been quite hectic and thanks to Sharon for the work that she's been doing with other colleagues in highways and transport to make a difference. So I'm looking forward to that and clearly in terms of the COVID situation that we're in, I just want to thank everybody who are making a really great effort to actually get us through what has been a difficult sort of eight to 10 weeks, but continuing to work hard. So all of the staff, from the chief executive down to every single member of staff in the council. Thank you on behalf of me, the cabinet, and the chief executive and his team as well for everything that you do. And as we keep saying, we can start to see a bit of light at the end of the tunnel. But we're not out the tunnel yet, so we'll keep working hard and keep protecting the city moving forward. Okay, I now...
Just before you move on to the next item, just wonder whether I could send out congratulations to the School of Tropical Medicine and the two hospitals, Aintree and Boyle, who together have announced today that they are part of, along with the World Travel Clinic, the new vaccine testing, the stage three testing of the Oxford vaccine. The city is playing a leading role in bringing that through the next stage of testing. We, my team, the public health team and the adult social care team have helped to coordinate and assist with the getting together of 500 healthcare and care workers for the new study. Members of the public and cabinet may have seen some of the research on the previous stage that was taking place, which has come successfully through and shows that the vaccine has some positive effect on the virus. And it may well be that the world-leading expertise that we have here in Liverpool with the School of Tropical Medicine and the research capacity here is once again showing the city at the forefront of vaccine development globally. And I would let's hope that the trial is successful and that Liverpool plays its part in delivering humanity from what is a very difficult situation with the virus at the moment. Well done to all of those who are involved in organising it so far. Individuals who participate in the trial.
Press and School of Tropical Medicine. To say well done. Okay, so before then I move the reservation. I just want to take the opportunity to thank anybody who's used this meeting, so thank you. Okay, I now...